Gong.
Here.
Millies?
Here.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Patigliano?
Here.
Aguilar?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just may members of the public make comments on any item not being voted on. As we take all matters presented, some items cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items in the hearing will be presented, and we will make comments at the time the item comes up or the planning commission gives a citation. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the planning commission may be limited at the discretion of the chief. In order to be considered by the planning commission, testimony in front of the hearing must be given at the time scheduled for public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the matter. As a courtesy, please put your filings on the side of the floor. Anyone wishing to make a comment. Nina, we'll move on to item number 10, which is the approval of minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 27, 2018 meeting.
I'll second it.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Nina was absent.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
I would just say we'll go on to the parcel map of the meeting. I see people are standing there.
Yes, through the chair, Aaron Bach. A person who wanted to make a statement about the roads out there. This doesn't necessarily reflect anything in regards to this project. She had talked to the project owner, but she thought this would be the proper forum to make a statement about the conditions of the roads out there. So no reason to pull it.
Parcel map. Public hearings, action on all parcel maps in the section that you have been here and heard. And when public hearing, unless anyone wishes to discuss any item, request that it be pulled for the summary. Separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate or summary trial. Anyone who wishes to form their desire. Nina, then we will continue. And open the public hearing. So, there's three items. The public hearing, the P S P, the 11, 18-013, and 18-001. Chair, if anyone wishes to make comments, please. Nina, we will close the public hearing and proceed.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Sections 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map, PPM 18-011, with an exemption and a final map waiver. I'll second it.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Special parcel map number P S P, 18-013.
I make a motion we approve category exemption consistent with California Environmental Act and the state SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number, PPM 18-013. Final map.
I second that.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Special parcel map number P S P, 18-013.
I make a motion that we approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15315, Class 15, pertaining to minor land divisions in urbanized areas and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number, PPM 18-008.
I'll second that motion.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
We'll move to the public hearing. For finding the special use permit number, P S P, 18-027, P S R, Gloria Villarriana.
Villarriana. Good morning, Commissioner Aguilar. Find this. This project is for a third residence on a 1.09 acre parcel in the RA 12.5 zone in the hamlet of West Goshen. And this is the location and property ownership map. This project was noticed according to the law, and staff has not received any comments regarding this project. Project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. And the project is appropriate and compatible with this exemption because the project is the addition of one single family residence within an urbanized area. Titlement is found in Section 15 A6C regarding second units whereby additional residences above that allowed ministerially in the RA zone shall require a final site plan be approved by the decision-making body. And I just want to make a note that when the applicant went through the initial review process, the existing zone was at that time A1, which is why we recommended a special use permit application. And since then, the West Goshen Hamlet Plan was adopted by the Board of Supervisors, which now requires a final site plan, so I just tagged on the P S R to the end. The subject site is located within the hamlet development boundary of West Goshen, and the land use designation is mixed use. This designation establishes areas appropriate for a planned integration of some combination of retail, office, single, and multifamily residential or other compatible uses. And the mixed use areas allow for higher density and intensity development. The project is consistent with these applicable to Larry County General Plan policies. This is the vicinity map. The project is located on the north side of Avenue 308 between Carolyn Street and Road 52 in West Goshen. This is the zoning map. The site is zoned RA 12.5, and the Board of Supervisors adopted the West Goshen Hamlet Plan in 2017, December. This is the aerial photo. There are two existing residences on this property, and the main residence is... Can't see. All right, that's not working. So anyhow, there's two existing residences, and this would be the third one. And this could be a mobile home. Closer view from Google Earth. Okay, well, the dome-like structure, this is the existing residence. Here's the second residence, a mobile home, and the proposed third would be back here, mobile home as well. This is the site plan illustrating the location of the proposed third residence, again in the back of the lot. And the septic system would be subject to the LAMP program. And this is staff's recommendation that you commission approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, conditionally approve special use permit number. It's directly off of Road. What road is that?
Avenue 308.
Avenue 308.
Which is the one in the front?
Yes.
So it's going to go, they'll drive straight back?
Yes, this is the driveway. This is the first residence, second residence, back here. Oh, I didn't mention that there is a code violation on this project. Or an RV hooked up to utilities, so the applicant did come in and get the proper permit. And they said that they would get a mobile home for their son. I believe that is the RV. It's been disconnected from utility.
Senator, do we have any limitations as to whether it's to be used as a, for a family member only?
It is, their son.
But it, but we're limited, can we limit it to the family and not that it turns into a rental?
I don't think that that's a requirement in a residential zone. In agricultural zone, that's a stipulation, but not in a residential zone.
Any other questions for dinner?
It just says that the septic system has to be, must be certified, huh, before?
Yes.
Or they can move forward to make sure it has the capacity?
Correct.
So all, excuse me, so all three homes are going to be on the same septic system?
I don't think so, but that's up to the Health Department. It would have to be analyzed. And, you know, if a new septic system needs to be put in, then that's what the Health Department would require.
So going to the new rule for septic system, how would that come to the picture?
Through the chair, Aaron Bach, Planning Director, Tulare County. The way it comes into the process is, for LAMP, is that they would submit a report to environmental health, and if they do use the existing system, it's just a matter of if they have the requisite capacity. And if they do, then there is no real variance required. That will be certified, but there's no variance required. However, if they do not have the capacity, what's going to happen in the future is, and maybe these people will be grandfathered in, but in the future, for a new septic system, they would have to do a complete geotechnical study to go along with it, to certify it, and that may require months, months of process, as much as six months, because they may need a variance, that would have to go back up to the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So this project hopefully does have the capacity within, gallonage within the septic system to be able to use one, one system. And that's what we're telling most people at Project Review Committee, is that, you know, if you can, get it into your one system, because in the future, it's going to be a totally different equation. Yeah, if you look on the...
The V was connected to electrical, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, if you look at the site plan on page 13 of this agenda item, it shows the septic system and leach lines towards the back. So you can see the, right there, between the existing residents and the existing second residence, back there, you can see the leach line system and the septic tank. So they would need to connect to that.
So there's two existing tanks.
Dana, I have one more question. Go back to the Google. I'm a little confused. The dome is one building, right? And then the big square building next to it is another one?
Through the chair, if you read the staff report, there was a use permit for a church
Yes, I read that.
And it had been used for residences, but, or residence, but it is not. So it's not like we're creating a fourth residence here. The violation is purely for the, and I don't know, I do not know what function that other building is serving, but it's not residential. This is for a third residence in the back, for storage. But yes, we will have to stay tuned to make sure that that does not become another residential unit in the...
Okay, this time we will open the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on the side, please. We will close the public hearing. We will bring back to the...
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved special use permit, final site plan number, PSP 18-027 slash P S R. I'll second that motion.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Stay tuned.
We will go to the special use permit number, PSP 18-01.
Good morning, Chairman Aguilar and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner 3 in County's Project Processing Division. Mirabell Enterprises, doing business as Las Flores Winery, wishes to amend our special use permit, ESP 07134, and allow assemblages of people in addition to a micro winery. A temporary use permit was approved for some events during this year while I was processing the permanent special use permit. That temporary event permit authorized four events during this calendar year, and no complaints were received. Property is located on the west side of Road 234, about 600 feet south of Avenue 84, south of Terabella. Site has direct access to County-Maintained Road 234. Traffic would be on 12 weekends per year and would add about 150 trips on those weekends. And the existing winery generates 44 daily trips. They would arrive at non-peak hours, and the daily trips were under the 100 peak hours that would require a detailed traffic analysis. Caltrans, State Route 65 is nearby, and Caltrans estimates that the estimates would have a minor impact. Zone, the site is zoned AE 10, which allows an assemblage of people with an approved use permit. Development standards are included as conditions of approval. Modifications from these regulations may be approved by you, the planning commission, in individual cases. One of the minimum requirements is for the property to meet minimum acreage requirements of the AE 10 zone. The parcel is eight and a half acres in size. However, the owner of an adjacent property signed a statement giving the applicants to, permission to use her property, the acreage of her property to provide a 10-acre site for assemblages for the purposes of obtaining a special use permit. It's just a requirement of the assemblages of people ordinance to meet the minimum acreage.
Yeah, through the chair, usually requires setbacks and buffers for the assemblage, screening for assemblages of people, so it helps them be able to establish those setbacks.
The site is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan. It's outside any urban boundaries. The project will not conflict with commercial agriculture, and the property owner is required to sign the Right to Farm Notice. The project is consistent with relevant elements of the general plan. Site currently contains a 2,700-square-foot micro winery building that has restrooms, space for wine tasting, and retail sales, barn, patio, storage container, water storage tank for fire suppression, domestic water well, and septic system. They plan to build a 6,000-square-foot event hall, and we'll be able to provide 113 parking spaces on the site, with 13 on asphalt and 100 on decomposed granite. Event hours would be 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for setup, 4:00 to 10:00 for the events, and 10:00 to 11:00 for cleanup. Entertainment by live music or a DJ. Portable toilets will be provided as needed. Food to be provided by licensed caterers. Alcohol provided by naturally the applicant, who has a license from the State Alcohol and Beverage Commission. The aerial shows the property's winery structure. Surrounding properties contain agglan and scattered rural residences. The nearest off-site residence is about 460 feet east. Assemblages require, ordinance requires fencing around the perimeter of the entertainment and parking areas during events in order to prevent trespassing onto basic properties. The assemblages include amplified sound, which may, is, shall not be permitted between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m. Water is provided by, less supplied by an off-site domestic well. Environmental health does not require a water system permit or health permit since the applicant will be holding private events only for their guests. The environmental health may require site evaluation for a new septic system. They'll be engineered designed. There are two fire hydrants on the site and a 4,000-gallon storage tank for fire suppression. Fire department requires access that meets 2016 California Fire Code for width and turnabouts. California Natural Diversity Database shows no species of concern on the site. There's no wetlands or waterways. Environmental planning chief planner has approved a categorical exemption from California Environmental Quality Act under the general rule and Section 15301 pertaining to existing facilities. Project does not have the potential for causing a significant impact on the environment and therefore is not subject to SEQA. They'll add a metal building that is less than the threshold of 10,000 square feet. Therefore, categorical exemption is appropriate. A public notice was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Visalia Times Delta. No comments were received. And this ends staff's report. Do you have any questions for me or for the applicants? They are in the audience. RV park?
No, that's a...
Come on up, Nicholas. Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay, it's open in the public hearing?
Name and address?
Name and address, please.
Name and address, Nicholas Flores, 6608 Palm Tree Circle, Bakersfield, California, 93308. The RV park, there's one on Deer Creek, and that's, I don't know, five, six miles north of us.
So you're going to have 12 events, once, one a month, or are they all in the fall?
I believe it was, it's for...
See, through the chair, there's no...
Twelve a year?
Good weather.
Yeah, that would be...
Concentrated in a certain part of the year, or are they all spread?
I mean, our busiest times are fall and spring when the weather's nice. But the planning on building that 6,000-square-foot building, that would give us opportunity to do things in the, you know, in the summer and winter months.
But it could go more than 12?
I think we're capped at 12, yeah.
I'm looking at the aerial here. Is this a vineyard planted around?
We, yeah, we have probably maybe two acres of vineyards, the north, east, and south. Yes, yeah. Yeah, Temperneo, Zinfandel, and Capsov.
And excuse me, your, says you have a liquor license. Is that for beer and wine?
It's, yeah, beer and wine only. Yeah, we have the ABC license, and then through the federal government, through the TTB.
Question for April. Did we get any comments from the neighbor that's 400 feet away?
Nicky Brandy or not?
No, just strictly wine, sparkling, red, whites.
You get other grapes and process them there, or is this all from...
Yes, yes. No. And we're small. We do about 16 barrels a year is what we crush.
Kind of nice to have another venue there.
Sure.
Come on out. It's fun.
Might have to go out there. Might have to verify the suspected...
I was looking, Pete Vanderpoel, he was in our wine club, actually. I saw his name up there, I got excited. Is he up here?
Sell that headache-free wine?
I'm sorry?
Sell the headache-free wine?
Oh, man.
Well, no, that's hard, yes. That's what no sulfites have.
That's a tough one.
We did make a sulfite-free wine, but it was only good for about six months, and then downhill from there.
There's a winery in Carmel that we, they were pioneers in the industry of organic wine, and they guarantee you can drink as much as you want. If you get a headache, it's on the house.
Oh, must have been on the house.
But they, I've tried it. It worked.
I, on the neighbor that's providing the access, what happens if that neighbor sells their property here?
It's a recorded easement, I would assume, goes with land. There's no easement?
No, right, right now, it's more akin to a license, if you want to go through all the types of legal documents that can transfer between neighbors. So yes, that would potentially go away if they were to sell it. But the only, and maybe at that time, they come back in for a deviation from the zoning, but they meet all the setbacks in and of themselves. So the intent, the intent of the assemblages of people is achieved here.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to contribute to the conversation?
I haven't had any problem with that.
Too bad we can't have a field trip.
Yeah, we went and saw...
The planning commission is free to do whatever they want.
Okay, who's going to make this?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the categorical, and I can't say that word, exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15061B/C, the general rule, and Section 15301, existing facilities, and conditionally approved special use permit number, PSP 18-020.
Second that motion.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Can I ask a question to Aaron, please? You know, I think maybe as planning commissioners, it might be interesting either a written document, or maybe a little presentation at one of our slower meetings, the differences between... between easements, licenses, I don't remember all the different ones because it comes up and that was a good question, is this an easement or a license?
Through the chair, I, as a non-attorney, I would leave that up to the attorney in the room if he could give you a presentation on the differences between the, the different types of servitude running with the land.
We'd be happy to, but Aaron, you're too modest, you are also a JD, so.
But yes, I, we could do that.
He took the easy curve route.
Good luck. Maybe Terrabella will turn out like Riverside. Yeah, that'd be nice.
It would be nice to have an area like that for visitors.
It would be nice.
Good if it had water.
Well, you know, I gave him, well, you gave him, but I did the project for the winery a number of years ago and his parents also did a permit for the micro winery. The parents have since retired and sold the property, so he said. But I think his father had health issues.
Well, there's, there's another, I think there's another one in Terrabella, I think there is another.
Yeah, there is, I think so.
Wine, I don't know if it's the winery per se.
There's at least three, I know of three.
Oh, then see?
See, there's a wine trail down in Terrabella. Microbreweries, or not micro wineries, I mean, not breweries.
Micro wineries.
Micro wineries.
They're whining.
Yeah, it's big.
Okay, let's go into the final site plan number PSR 16-002, your turn again.
Yes, it is, thank you Chairman Aguilar. This is to allow a third residence, another third residence on a separate site, and this is in the R2, two-family zone in Tipton. And this is the location and property ownership map for hearing notification, and this project was noticed according to the law and staff has not received any comments regarding the project. This project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. And the use of this section is appropriate as this exemption applies to single family residences up to three in urbanized areas. Titlement is found in Section 9.7.E.35, which allows agric, whoops, pardon me. 7.A.2.5, which allows multiple dwellings and/or group houses in the R2 zone. Subject to approval of a site plan pursuant to the procedure set forth in Section 16-2, which is the final site plan feature. And also Section 7F, which requires that a lot area per family for single family dwellings should be the same as in the R1 zone, and every two-family dwelling hereafter erected or structurally altered shall have a lot area of not less than 3,000 square feet per family.
So Dana, why, why do we have to bring this to the planning commission, why could it be like an over-the-counter approval?
Well, we have over-the-counter, over-the-counter approval for up to two residences, and because this is the R2 zone, they're asking for a third residence in the two-family zone, so.
If I wanted to build a fourplex, as long as I had the square footage of land, wouldn't that be by right or not?
In the R3 zone, it's by right, anything over four residences.
Well, through, through the chair, we still have the site. When we did our community plans, we wanted to make things a little bit more efficient by removing the SR overlay and the M overlay, mobile home overlay, most of these communities. However, our zoning itself still requires the site plan review for R2 and R3 zones. And I think the rationale back in the porch finny days for this was that we could do a zoning check. Some agencies have development permits or zone check permits to make sure that the setbacks are met and everything else, so that we get paid for that process more so than you would with a straightforward building, building permit. And this, because we no longer have site plan review, is now within your jurisdiction, so you get to see these.
Thank you. Okay, so, the project is located in the urban development boundary of the community of Tipton and the land use designation is medium density residential, and the project was found to be consistent with these general plan policies. Project site is located at 766 Spencer Avenue, on the northwest corner of Spencer Avenue and Callison Road, which is Road 120 in the community of Tipton. Existing zoning is R2, which is the two-family zone, and the parcel contains an existing duplex. Properties to the north, west, and south all contain residences, and the property to the east is agriculture. Here's the aerial photograph of the project site. Here's the Google Earth view. And this is the existing duplex, and the third residence would go to the west of the existing. In the back, yes, that is a separate parcel. And we can go back and, I mean, they're fairly small parcels.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that corner parcel looks like it's a little larger than the others, is that, is that the case, or is it just the way the road is?
Well, I didn't really look on all of the parcels around there to see what their areas were. The applicant proposes an already built residence of standard construction which will be moved onto the subject site from a separate location. Sewer and water will be provided by the Tipton CSD. The Tipton CSD does not provide, you know, will serve letters, but staff did receive a call from the Tipton CSD and a receipt from the applicant indicating that water and sewer service can be provided and the hookups have been paid for. This is the site plan, it's rather poor quality. But it will get recorded.
Can you go back to the?
Can.
So is the access gonna be the little?
Well, the applicant is here, the access for the, I can't get this thing to show up on this, there it is.
That's gonna be the access?
Yes. And there's, you know, this is the access for one of the duplexes and this is the access for the other half. Any other questions? No.
I think that's a dead tree there.
Well, the applicant is here, when you open up the public hearing, you can ask him these questions if you wish.
And through the chair, the public works did require asphalt drive approach, so the entry would be asphalt and curb gutter and associated pavement widening, like most things would be deferred, it's not, you don't see that on any of the other streets necessarily in the Tipton area, but that would be a requirement ultimately if the county were to build sidewalk asphalt or sidewalk gutter and any pavement widenings would be required as for deferred agreement.
So it is, it is, the driveway is in a requirement to put the asphalt?
Approach is required.
Is there on the other ones?
As far as the approach, could, could be, but it looks like it's covered by quite a bit of sand, it could've been. But who knows if it's still existing out there? But that, that's always one of our requirements, and as far as the all-weather surface would be the other requirement for the driveway, so, for fire.
That alley all dirt, or is that paved or?
That, to me, looks like it's dirt.
Sure it's dirt.
Well, it's only the recommendation of approval. That's okay, for the, for the categorical exemption, final site plan 16 does.
Yeah, you know, I don't think there's any issues, I like the fact that it's an R2, but duplex is still one building and then the second building is not gonna impact the looks of the, anymore of the neighborhood, it's still gonna look like two, two homes on the thing. So, yeah, so, you can close it.
Only improve the neighborhood. Good improvement.
Guys are ready, then I say I would make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with CEQA and Califor, and state CEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve final site plan number PSP 16-002.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Patiglano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Aaron got a promotion.
Through the chair, Aaron Bach, I'm not gonna use my full title, the director's report. So, just so the commissioners are aware, we did achieve 599 projects this year, calendar year, mostly due to the community plans and the five projects that we generally approve with each one of those separately. This year, we did achieve some pretty, pretty lofty tasks as far as within the calendar year, including Early Mart, and the other 21, Hamlet, Legacy, and updated or approved for the first time, five, five other community plans. The Hash, I don't know if you talked about this last time, the Hash project was approved by the board, and I think that'll be a great opportunity for the county, it'll be the first, as I'm learning, the first CFD done in this community facilities district we've done in this county, so that'll be interesting as we move forward, but already on its heels, this Sequoia Gateway project is proposing generally the same thing, so those are pretty, pretty big things we've achieved over the last calendar year. And I do wanna say that, including Three Rivers, and just for the record, we did get our marching orders to approve that, get that project up to the board and approved as early as about a year ago. So, by December, and that, that came not only from the board member but from the community itself. So, within, within six months of that, we had a product that we were able to put on the street as of December, and it only took us another six months to respond to every one of the comments that were made. Three Rivers is a, and I do wanna give Hector and Dave Bryant a lot of kudos for making that happen, 'cause the turnaround times were, I mean, you have Hash going at the same time, and you have Goshen going at the same time, and you've had Early Mart all going at the same time as that project's gone through the process. So, again, kudos to Dave Bryant and Hector Garrett for getting that done, and all the staff members, Jessica Willis, Susan Simon, Tim Bailey, and anybody else who worked on that project to get that done. I, I think, over the long term, I always get the question from Mike Washam, why don't we have more unique goals or policies for each one of these communities? And we always fall back to our general plan that says we need vertical and horizontal consistency. If, when we legislate as a governing board, our, our powers are pretty significant, and you'd be hard pressed to challenge us on when we legislate. When we are doing the general plan, I mean, that's akin to the constitutionality of this county, so, but one of the things that we could fall down on is horizontal and vertical consistency. So, we try to make all of our community plans the same. In fact, our general plan policy is that they be identical unless there's a outstanding reason to do otherwise, and which we did with the Three Rivers Community Plan. There are unique policies and guidelines in that project that you will not see anywhere else in this county. So, it was quite a great effort to, to get it where it was at, and I do applaud staff for being able to achieve that. I, I myself spent countless hours rewriting and writing and rewriting that plan, and I worked on it for over three years, so, from the time I, we started writing, writing it. So, it was quite a significant effort. So, I did want to also state, we are looking to do a workshop for the Sequoia Gateway project, so stay tuned for that. Again, doing lots of first things, I think it would be a great opportunity to get the APAC together to, not APAC, the ALAC together to look at that too, as far as a workshop, so we, we understand what, what it is and what it is not, moving forward. With that, I would like to say we are still continuing to work on three new community plans, and Ivanhoe, Poplar, and the big dog, Cutler-Rosi, and we, the first meeting I held out there going on about two years ago for Complete Streets, there was 80 people. And so, we look forward to a lot, a lot of comments, the, I think we've learned our process to such a high level now that we can actually go out with a product and get feedback versus working through the product with the, the community.
What's the population of?
I, I'm just, yeah, just guessing, close to 22,000. But like all of our, with all of our, as I was talking to somebody about Department of Finance Statistics yesterday, the accuracy is, you know, standard deviation's up to 40% so. The actualities of the densities of the households is always higher, but the actual house count, I'm finding in this county, is pretty low from, from their statistics, so, I can't wait till the next census to, to get a better idea, but. Well, since census years, I think they get a pretty good, decent count, but the American Survey's estimates after that, sometimes even contradict the census itself, so, interesting, especially as the more rural you get, the farther inaccurate they are, but, it's, again, these community plans are to help get grants, and no matter what, for the most part, they're severely disadvantaged communities, so with a higher population and disadvantage, there'll be more, it'll be easier to get, get grants, especially for Cutler-Rosi. That's all I have, unless you have anything else?
Hector, you're Chief Environmental Planner, you heard him announce it, it's his full title, but I would like to say Aaron Bach is the planning director now, so kudos to him, he's, I think he's earned it, he's worked exceptionally hard, he works hours that people don't know of, 'cause it's almost like I've, I've left at 6:30, he's still there, I come in at 7:30, he's still there, it's like, did you even go home and change? You know, so, he, he works very hard and he relies on a lot of accuracy, he's, he's very good at what he does. As Matt pointed out, he does have a JD, and I rely on him to be my, my, my first CEQA attorney field, you know, it's kinda like, what about this and what about that? You know, it's kind of like, what about this and what about that? And he has immense knowledge of SEQA case law and is very, very useful, made my job heck a lot easier. And, you know, I confided him regarding these projects that we're working on, and he gives me some really clear and great advice, and he's accurate. He's right. So I like that. You know, that's, I trained him well. He was my planner for it. But he does good work. You know, regarding the plans that we've put out, you don't see the stuff that goes behind the scenes, and you shouldn't have to, but, you know, we just don't work on planning-related projects. We work on public works, great public benefits projects, a bunch of bridges going up out there that we do a lot of work with, or they have a consultant that I have to provide oversight for a large environmental project. One that's coming up, a community meeting is being planned for the Three Rivers area for the Mineral King Bridges, everybody calls it. You know, so that thing is going forward, and Caltrans is paying for all of it, a lot of money, seven, eight million dollars, one hundred financed by Caltrans. Not a penny's gonna be taken from the community. And the bottom line alternative for that thing, it's going to be basically a restoration project. They're gonna keep it the way it is. You know, so that's, a lot of options were looked at, so the one they're gonna say is retrofit it, restore it, keep it nice the way it is. So that community meeting's coming up. We did, we're having a scoping meeting today for the Springville Dollar General Store. You know, we've gotten some feedback from the community, some are not too thrilled by it, but that's okay, because we're gonna go through the SEQA process. Now, it's been elevated to environmental impact report, so that means, again, as I've told everybody, I need facts, you know, I need substantiation, I need impacts, I need studies. You give me the stuff, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna weigh it, because we have consultants working on the science behind it. Yeah, I know some people are not thrilled by it, and that's okay. You know, I love their opinions, because they bring up some good arguments, they bring up some good points, and we don't wave them off. You know, we look at them, it's like, okay, sometimes they don't know that's been addressed here. Sometimes they don't know some stuff is by rights. Sometimes they don't know other agencies like the Valley Air District, or Caltrans, or the Water Board, or whomever is gonna look at that too. And that's okay, because we educate them. So I think, you know, using their director, couldn't pick a better person to do it and lead us. I'm excited by that prospect. So, you know, Commissioners have made some really good decisions, and some of them may, you may not agree on all the projects that come forward, you know, but we gotta keep moving forward, and you folks are doing a great job, great job. So thank you so much for listening to us, you know, and giving us that opportunity to tell you what we feel are the facts, and then you weigh that, and like, I've heard this said many times by the Commissioners, we are your peers when you talk to members of the audience, and you are. You know, you represent that peer voice. And then it goes up to legal level, of course, to the Board, where occasions, they have to make the final decision. So I thank you for your patience and your diligence. Looking forward to working through a new year. Aaron pressed so hard to get six hundred projects, but we couldn't quite get there, so it was, it's exciting times for us, too. Thank you.
Make one of these retroactive.
I missed the vote. Carwata ordinance, just like to go on record saying that I agree with it. It's too late to change the vote, but where is it now with the Board?
Yes, we are planning to go to the Board on the twenty-fourth to give a presentation, and it'll be as it was presented to the Planning Commission, basically with no recommendation, but they'll take the facts decision accordingly.
Was there a to make anyway, right?
Yeah, correct, and.
There goes with the recommendation.
We're going through the process, and so a rezone requires first going to the Planning Commission, so it's where it needs to be right now.
Just to let you be sure, Whitlatch, no, nobody came up and offered testimony, favor or opposition. It's the, maybe they're familiar with the process and know that the Board has ultimate decision because of the change versus the recommendation, then they have to take the final action, but there was no one in.
Just a few projects that I'd like to mention. One is we do have the Avenue one fifty-two safety improve project that we just finished bidding, so. Provide safety improvements along the one forty-two corridor between State Route ninety-nine and City Portable Stadiums. That was identified, that's gonna be federally, fully federally funded, and that quarter was identified as a high-risk corridor, so there's gonna be a lot of permits to that. Another project that.
Is that where they did that, roundabout it? Is that, or is that the one, is that the one that was from South Side and Tipton?
No, that's one forty-four.
Oh, yeah, that's one forty, that's Avenue one forty-four.
That's a roundabout, yeah, that's.
This, yeah, so Avenue one fifty-two cuts through, I think, the heart of Tipton, and it goes over the Two Lee River to the City Portable.
It's a real, real wide one, real, it's wide.
What's the next, it's the next.
Yeah, it's the next one over, yeah.
It's not as highly traveled as one forty-four.
Oh, it's highly traveled, not as many trucks.
West forty-four has all the Walmart trucks, right?
Yes, yes, it is.
Also with Avenue forty-four, we did have, we do have one, I need to check on the staff, but we do have the Avenue one forty-four rehabilit, rehab project, which was part of the farm market program project. We also have, as far as the one forty-four, for the next round of SB one projects, the next stretch of one forty-four will be overlaid or rehab as well, so.
What's the length of that?
What's that?
Johnson, the length of the one forty-four project, isn't it rather long?
That is rather long. I don't know on the top of my head, but I know that the first project was, I think, from State Route, I don't know on top of my head, but I can provide the number next time, but it's a pretty long stretch. And we know that it is a key farm market route identified by TCAG, so that is one of our high priority routes. But that's gonna be, that's, the first one was covered under the farm market program, which is fully paid by Mezzaro, and the second component, which will be our second round of SB one projects, will be covered by SB one funds. So that takes care of one forty-four, but the Avenue one fifty-two one is federally funded, and it's really to improve the safety features along that quarter. And Caltrans is also making, I think they have an environmental draft, environmental document on that Tipton Bridge, I don't know if you are aware of that one at all?
Probably not.
No. But Tipton, so in Tipton, there's a bridge there, and I believe Caltrans identified that that's a, I think they're gonna do some safety improvements on that bridge as well.
Really narrow.
It's really narrow, and so they're doing some studies right now to, I think the end goal is to make it wider and safer. And that, along with our project, and City Portable, I believe we're gonna, there's a bridge over the Two Lee River on Avenue one fifty-two. I believe we receive funding for that as well, so it will be.
Oh, yeah.
I believe it's, I don't know if it's gonna be a four-lane bridge or a two-lane bridge, but then I know that definitely it's narrow as well, and so it, there's gonna be a lot of work along that corridor.
I thought they did that one already. That's way over there by Porterville, right?
Yeah, it's on the west side of Porterville, and I don't believe, I'm pretty, I don't know if anything's been done lately, but I know for sure that there's definitely gonna be a rehab, rehab or replacement, but I don't know where it's at right now.
I think it's a four-lane bridge.
It's a four-lane bridge?
Are there, you were saying farm-to-fork monies, you know.
Farm-to-market?
I mean, farm-to-market, okay, so west of the ninety-nine on one forty-four, that is definitely a main route to the prison. So are there funds available, like state funds? Because those vans, I mean, that is very, because that's all the employees, that's the way they go to work. It's huge. I mean, they're in the mornings, like about, you know, five in the mornings, I don't know when that shift changes, but it's.
That would be interesting. I don't know, but I do know that definitely that segment will be taken care of by either Mezzaro, SB one, something.
So it's involved in that, they know that.
I don't know how that would, that would, but I do know that we definitely have eyes on that quarter, so we are taking.
They did, they improved a good section of that from the Ramo Track all the way to the city.
Yes, but it's gonna go all the way down, right?
That's right.
Yes, yeah, it's gonna continue on, yeah, and they've done a great job. It's really, it's good.
It's quick, too.
It is fast.
Yeah, that's our goal. Our goal is to truly get out there and just get it done, and try not to waste too much public funds, because we really wanna make sure we make efficient use of funds. The only other project I'd like to talk about would be the D one twenty-nine Sand Creek Project. It's northeast of.
Cutler-Rosi?
Cutler-Rosi. So that one, too, will be in structure. I believe it's gonna be, I'd like to say, oh, we're beginning of the new year, but I don't know for certain right now, but definitely, but I don't know, I can give you a better update on the date. But there are, we have a lot of projects that are moving, but right now, we are closing up, we're finalizing our first round of SB one projects, and so right now, we are working on plans for the second round of SB one projects, so everything's moving, and we have a lot of projects. The last note is, we are working, last time I mentioned, we're working on federal funds for the active transportation program. I tell you that the total cost of projects we're applying for, which equates to about twenty-two million dollars worth of projects. I would like to, it'd be nice to get them all, but even if we get a few, just to help out the communities, it'd be great, and we do have a very strong team this year, and we also have the planners that are assisting this year as well. So we do have a great team, and hopefully we get funds for these projects.
You got funds from the feds for tree removal, correct?
For what?
For tree removal up in the mountains. I just saw something, Hillary County, some federal agency gave us, I don't know how many million, three, four, I don't know, thirty million, I don't know what it was, for tree removal of the dead trees.
Eric Coines.
Nasty Woods.
Nasty Woods. Yeah, I know that Nasty Woods and Eric Coines, they were working on a grant with Cal Fire, I believe it's their grant, but I'm not sure.
They said the funds were coming.
I'll look into that, I'll definitely provide an update.
That'd be a good one.
I noticed Betty Drive demolished the old bridge. Half the bridge is functioning, they seem to be right on target. Is that true?
Betty Drive, Betty Drive's, if you look, it's open, the overpass, so it's, it's, yeah, I was telling you, July, and they'll definitely be on to November to clean that up. The more important question we got was, what are we doing about sixty-four? And we're moving pretty quickly to address all of the design requirements to get that into construction as soon as possible as well, so.
That's the one you're gonna remove?
Well, sixty-four is the, from one ninety-eight into Goshen, going north-south, so that's the other access route, and it'll be much more used in the future. But right now, it's in pretty, in pretty bad condition. Yeah, you said, what was it, Sherif might be one of the worst roads? No, no.
And this is one of those instances where an EIR has played an influential role in that when the Pappich Asphalt Bash Plant was first approved, that road sixty-four was not in great shape, still is not in great shape, and meets minimal standards. Well, they were going to generate about seventy-seven percent of the traffic on it, and it's not just regular traffic, it's truck traffic. That's a lot. Those things beat up roads really, really bad. So knowing that their impact was going to be, you know, X number, the nexus was establishing that because of your trucks, the volume, the weight, the speed, everything, you gotta pay for seventy-seven percent of that road, and they were like, okay. So that is awesome, because, you know, we were able to demonstrate, using our SEQA document, and the reality of it is, they're gonna beat up that road. So that road, other funding is gonna come, I believe, from TCAG or wherever it may come from.
No, yeah.
Maybe that won't be their in-kind match.
Yeah, that's.
That could be their in-kind.
You had Jeff Rash and CMI in here for doing the use permit.
Yeah.
It's CMI now, and they don't, they don't do construction, they just provide the aggregate, but they are, as soon as the sixty-four hook ramps go down, they've paid upwards of three hundred thousand in installments today, but as soon as those go down, they're a thousand to pay off the nexus fees for mitigation fees.
And then Betty Drive is, the bridge is half-open. The other half they're still working on, but it's, and if you, I don't know if you noticed that it was so salient, I can hear an announcement on it, but they knocked down the old Betty Drive over crossing. Because I see it every day when I come into work, and one day, half the bridge is gone, and the next day, the other half is gone, and wow, they tore that down really, really quickly. So it, they're getting there, they're inching forward.
Yeah, we're already seeing projects move forward in Goshen.
Oh, I think you're gonna see, I think Goshen's gonna be the place to stop on the ninety-nine when.
Mike Washam gave his economic development presentation to the Board. There was one final slide, and right now, there's a, I gotta be careful here. There's a retail, fast-food center going on just north of Lucky's project, where the old Yamaha was, so it's, it's gonna happen.
That's exciting, right?
It is.
For our community, it really is, because, you know, people think Goshen is by Saya. You know, when you're driving through, they think it all extends. It almost does extend now, and it's, that's great for the community.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be exciting.
So Aaron, do you have a new position? No one's there to announce it or anything?
Well, I think Hector.
I just did. I count.
New title?
It's, let's see, what do we write down here? Interim Assistant Director, Economic Development and Planning, so Planning Director. But Mike can announce me if he wants.
I'd like to announce Aaron Bach as the interim Assistant Director of RMA for Planning and Economic Development and Planning Branch, so it's well-deserved. He's taken control of the department, and he's going forward. I'm still gonna keep my eyes on this, but on the Planning Commission and all the activities going forward, and it's gonna be a gradual transition as we do implement this, but I'm being called to other places, so it's harder to focus on certain aspects, like I was just in another meeting here. And so it's well-deserved, and we go forward from here.
Congratulations. You don't have a new title, do you, Mike? You don't have a new title, right?
A new title? No, well, I'm Associate Director, so that was about a year, I think about a year.
Double duty.
I'm doing double, well, triple duty, because I was the Economic Development Manager, then to Assistant Director, but we didn't refill the economic person, and then I went to Associate Director, and then told me how we didn't fill the Assistant Director position, so.
They just gave you three jobs.
Um, yeah, I'll still be doing the chief job, so, yeah, that's fine.
Free paycheck, so it's okay.
Well, it's just the way things are, just the way things are nowadays. We do more with less, you know.
You guys are doing a great job. I mean, I've been Planning Commissioner for twenty years, and compared to when I first came, and the backlog of things going back a hundred years, maybe not a hundred years, but close, you seem to be all on the same page, you know.
You used the word I'm not familiar with, backlog. Can you define what?
We don't see that. The numbers are all very close to the projects we have, and so from the community, that's where I hear it, that people are very satisfied with the job you're doing, the information you give out, so.
And we used to hear it when it was the other way.
Right.
Well, and you can even see it, Neil Zerling and Fred Weber are sitting here with smiles and shaking hands, and then they're out of here, you know, half an hour later, so. Yeah, just with our clientele throughout the county, we, it's rare that we get complaints anymore coming down from the Board, so.
That's why we'll have economic development in the county, and that's good.
I just, I'm assuming you're at the Director's Report or final or whatever.
We're done, we're done with that, but I did give them the heads-up on your economic development presentation about Goshens, the projects.
Oh, the projects in Goshen? Okay, great. And I, just a couple of things, just touch base on building permits and activities, kind of to look forward as we close fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Building permits we issued last year were thirty-eight hundred and seventy-four, which is down about five percent from the previous year, and our construction valuation was a hundred and ninety-seven and a half million dollars, and that was down about twelve percent from last year. But most of that can be attributed to the reduction in solar residential permits, which are down almost twenty-eight percent. So, and I've been saying this for the last year and a half or so, that at some point, the saturation's gonna go, and that's gonna start to slow, because that's really was driving the last few years. A very large percentage of our permits were that, and that doesn't get to assessed value for property tax anyway until the value is in a resale of a house, because up to then, you can't reassess the property, so there's, there's no assessed value increase on a solar project until the house sells. But our commercial and ag permits continue to be up year over year. And I, you touched on Valley Children's coming forward, okay, so Valley Children's, the.
Sequoia Gateway, I did suggest we're gonna do a workshop.
Okay.
Here, but yes, please.
And that, well, that's, we should be releasing the draft environmental document by the end of this month, and then try to get to the Board for final approval. We'll have the workshop in that period of time, and get to the Board for final approval in November for that, the Sequoia Gateway, which includes the Valley. and get to the board for final approval in November for that, uh, Sec, uh, the Sequoia Gateway, which includes the Valley Children's. And then you mentioned ninety-nine on Betty Drive, the, 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 um, the project there, that looks very positive going forward, and we're trying to save, right currently on that site is, um, Kernan, um, Kernan, uh, mobile homes, and we're trying to find another location so they're not losing out, uh, so we're still in, in Goshen or that general area to be able to keep them, uh, as they need to vacate the site to, to allow the building of the new project. Uh, Premier Trailers, which is in Goshen, they, they have a sandlot, they, they manufacture trailers and, and whatnot, and it's, and they've really outgrown their size and they've become a, a little bit of an impact to the surrounding properties. They've purchased property down in Goshen, or in Pixley, in industrial area down there, twenty-acre parcel, so they're gonna build a new facility down there and relocate from Goshen to, uh, that area, which will be more appropriate. Doesn't impact residential houses as, as their existing site, and this allows them to grow, um, the.
What was that, uh, milk thing?
Okay, the milk thing in Tipton, that, the timing on that is, um, it, the, the financing that was through the EB five, uh, visa program. That's, that's how they were getting, raising the, the funds for investment from outside the, the country. That program allows people, uh, visas if they're investing a certain amount of money into job creation and, and, and value in the US. Well, one of the main participants of that, that was setting that up, was, fell into a secure, an SEC investigation, and so that's what tied it up, it wasn't the specific project, but it was that person's, uh, uh, other projects that tied this whole thing up. So it went into receivership a half years ago, so that's why it was just sitting empty.
Was that the Lactalis Building?
Yes, in, yeah.
By milk?
Yeah, it was, uh, well, it was a mozzarella cheese, it was mozzarella cheese is what they were, the last thing that was doing, yeah, yeah.
Lactalis sold it.
But they sold it to, yes, they owned the company and they, they sold it, and they, they relocated to Idaho, I believe, to another facility. Uh, so that sat vacant for, and, and there was about a hundred and, a hundred and something jobs that were associated with that. Uh, unfortunately, so investigations moved slowly, but just on, on June twentieth, it was sold to, uh, another investor. So that, now that investor, I've only talked to the attorney, haven't had any meetings with the new owner yet, but through their attorney, said that they wanna proceed with the same type of project that was being proposed. So hopefully we'll see some movement now and, and start to go forward on that. On another front, we were, the, 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 um, California Department of Food and Agriculture Dairy Digestor Research Development Program just issued, um, awarded thirty-seven million dollars for twenty, twenty-one digester projects in the county. So that's huge, uh, that, that adds on to the eleven projects that were awarded grants last year, so in total, Tulare County projects have been awarded fifty-five million dollars in grants for, um, for, uh, projects that total about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth. So those are moving forward, that's a big, uh, a big boost for the dairy industry and, uh, and sustainability, so.
So they're like, oh, generate.
Well, it's, 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 they're covering dig, they're, they're covering lagoons and, and capturing the, the gas, piping it via pipelines to a central facility, and then there's different operations, there's, there's the Pixie, Pixley Cluster, which is going to Pixley Biogas, that's the largest one of these projects. And they're utilizing it at the ethanol plant for their boilers, but they're also going to scrub it and put it into the Southern California Gas Pipeline, so they're selling it back to the utility. And ultimately, um, uh, Cowgrin wants to put a, um, a fuel sta, uh, uh, station there too for trucks that run on that. So that's one, that's Pixley, but then there's other ones, there's, there's other clusters where there's a cluster of four or five dairies, and they have their own fleet that runs on compressed nat, on gas, compressed natural gas. So they're going to be, um, fueling their own fleet of, of vehicles, and then there's other ones that are doing, uh, uh, similar things and sinking in. So there's, there's a number of projects, they're not just, it's not just one project and they're not individual, but they're really close with. So all told, we've got thirty-two that have been awarded grants in the last eight, eight months. And, uh, beyond that, there's probably another ten or twelve that are moving forward, whether they get the grants or not, they're still applying for more grants. There'll be another release of funding, this is all from cap and trade, uh, and, and so that's, that's, we're already approaching at least over ten percent of the dairies now are gonna have a digester associated with them, and we have over twenty percent of the dairies have solar, uh, associated with the site. So they're really going for the renewable, uh, energy.
How big a decline are we in the dairy industry? I mean, I read lots and lots about it, including the Wall Street, about California losing.
Uh, we, we're going through a study right now to try to, uh, determine exactly where we stand as herd size, but there has been some reduction. I, I'm, I would be speculating at this point, but I'm thinking we probably have two hundred and sixty dairies, two hundred and fifty dairies, down from a high of three hundred and thirty, I believe, was the, the peak. So there has been a number, and now, whether some of those herds have been relocated out of the area, some have been combined with others. So we're trying to, we're trying to get that reporting to, to determine whether the actual whole herd size in the county has shrunk or just been, um, consolidated, but I know that some have moved out of the area.
And also maybe something to consider would be some of those were definitely sub-dairies, those dairies that weren't meeting any requirements at all that were grandfathered in. So it, it's a plus.
Right.
For those to shut down, but I think the larger dairies absorbed them. It'd be interesting to find out that number.
Yeah, we're, we're going through that, Jason Garcia, our chief planner, that, uh, works specifically, um, in permit center, but also is, is our dairy guy, uh, is going through that process right now to, to determine.
Good information on that.
You know, I, I'm a little concerned about the dairy industry here, uh, when this Sustainable Groundwater, uh, Management Act is, comes into place, because, uh, if there's limitations on how much you can pump out of your own wells, uh, that water might be too valuable to grow row crops or feed crops. And, uh, if you've got permanent plantings, um, and you're only allowed to say, just, just, just for instance here, uh, able to pump half of your, half the water that you need to maintain that permanent planting, you're gonna have to go to the fellows that are, have open ground and buy their water from them, and then that open ground stays fallow.
Yeah.
And then the dairymen doesn't have feed, and he's gonna have to haul his feed in and haul his milk out. It's not gonna be, it's gonna be real interesting what's gonna happen if, if there's some serious regulations and limitations on what you can pump.
So, so if they're producing milk, then that should be considered a replacement, right? Things are coming back out.
Sounds good to me.
Makes sense to me.
And, uh, I don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves with Sigma, cause we don't know what it's gonna be like, cause you, going on the different committees across the county from where they have water to where they don't, it's gonna be different everywhere you go.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, the, the great, the great thing about the agric, agricultural industries is they always find a way. So it'll be, it'll be interesting, I mean, as far as conserva, conservation measures, you know, when you look at what they do in other parts of the state as far as conservation measures, that we don't necessarily do here. Um, are they willing to do them or not, will be the big, the big question. So I mean, we're a long ways from saying what Sigma is yet and what the enforcement mechanisms are going to be at the end of the day, so, we'll see.
I'm, I'm sure there's still conservation to be done, I had some clients from Spain who say, you guys waste so much water here, and we can't do that in Spain, so. And it's in the ag, so.
There are.
We do use a lot of water, and, and I think they're probably talking about flood irrigation and stuff like that. Problem is that floodwater is exactly what's going down in the charge.
Again.
If you're using drip irrigation.
We, we're just beginning to do the analysis now, and you, I bet you, what I'm seeing so far, you won't really know what the, the infiltration rates, how that affects the actual aqua for, for at least five years. A lot of the stuff you're gonna see right off the bat now is just gonna be the, the quant, qual, qualification information. We probably won't get to hard quantification for another, another five years, so. I, I know everybody's afraid right now, but I, I, I'd be really hard-pressed to say, to actually tell anybody about how much water they are going to be able to pump or not.
Well, it's interesting, too, the demand for dairy is down about thirty percent nationally, and it's gonna continue to go down, and we can stall it off all we want, but it's on the way out, the dairy industry.
Right, so I think the more conservation mitigation measures to protect the industry here in the county regulatorily will help it sustain itself. Necessarily support it as well as it might have in the past. But I did wanna add to what Mike was saying, um, as far as the valuation that was down a little bit this year, I think we're gonna make up for in a large part because of these, uh, dairies, uh, digesters. And, um, I think, uh, we still did six hundred permits for the cities, that what Jason was saying, uh, for the city building permits? We, we were down a little bit for, um.
Oh, for the county versus Exeter and, and Farmersville? Yeah, I didn't look at those specific numbers, but yeah.
Yeah. So it's, so.
It's, it, the activity is, and I've been saying this for a while, because solar, rooftop solar was such a hu, over-inflated some of the numbers, and, and I've been saying, you're gonna look at a drop-off of that, and I think that's what we saw this year. We, last year we'd issued seven hundred and twenty-something, uh, solar permits out of four, forty-one hundred total permits, so that's a large percentage. This year we were right around five hundred, so that's a, it was a big reduction, about twenty-eight percent reduction in solar permits. So that's where your numbers are, but when you're looking at commercial, the commercial per, permits and, and ag-related commercial permits are up. So that's a good sign that the, we're still moving forward. We, we approved, uh, well, the Pixley Biogas Project, two components of that, just two components of that were two and a half million dollars that we just issued building permits this, this past month for. And then there was a cold storage, uh, expansion of a million and a half dollars too last month. So they're still, they're still expanding in, in that sector, but, um, but the overall numbers, if you just look at the overall numbers, you gotta kinda get below the, the tip tops of the wave to understand what's going on.
I think they're building a large project though, is it Fresno County out by Avonel? That's gonna be like twenty-five hundred acres of solar, it's huge.
Oh, a, a large solar, yeah, uh, Central Valley is way over, um.
To go south from Avonel.
And we do, we do have a potential, we, we've had one, a hun, a seventy-megawatt project that's gone through PRC. We haven't yet received the actual application, uh, so that's something that we might have, have another one coming forward down towards Terabella.
I get calls for, and we're, I know it's gonna happen, is that, uh, Southern California Edison and PG&E buying sites for storage of electricity, basically just big containers filled with batteries. And, uh, that's, uh, that's, that's, that's happening now.
We, yeah, we've, we've already permitted and, and for Alpaw, um, some of the first sites that we've, the large-scale solar sites that, out near Alpaw, uh, and the high-speed rail, high-speed rail is taking a chunk of one of them, it's kinda going right through one of the fields. So they're relocating some, uh, about a megawatt or a little bit more of their panels to another spot on the same, same parcel. But they're also looking at modifying, and they have a ten-megawatt, uh, storage, battery storage. So what that would feed, they'll, they'll charge it up during, um, during the, the night, and it'll feed back into the grid during the daytime to help sustain and balance out the, the main, and use.
Kinda interesting because they're all module, uh, batteries, and so it just, you just plug in, pretty amazing.
Yes?
All I got.